If you'll please rise, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is behind Ms. Johnson. Please join me. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One Nation Under God, Invisible with Liberty and Justice for All." Everyone has a copy of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Usleton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Is there any individual here to address the board on an agenda item or a non-agenda If not, let's go to student celebration. Dr. Stevens.
Yes, I'm very excited to welcome and introduce one of our 7th grade students, Joaquin Tanaglia Canute, who, by the way, I happened to be in his 7th grade science class today, and he was engaging in an online discussion with his teacher, so that was pretty special to me, knowing that he was coming this evening. So, Joaquin, why don't you come forward, and you're going to join Chairman Welsh, while I get to share with everyone why we are celebrating you this evening. Joaquin Tanaglia Canute has been honored as one of the brightest young students in the world by Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth. Specific testing is used to identify advanced students from around the world, which provides a clear picture of their true academic abilities. Joaquin was one of more than 16,000 students from 66 countries who tested in the 2019-2020 Talent Search. Congratulations and well done, Joaquin. And now, if I can invite Mom and Dad and maybe even Sister to come forward, we'd like to take a family photo. This is a big deal and a big thing to celebrate. How good. And can I just say one more time, has been honored as one of the brightest young students in the world by the Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth. Whoop, whoop!
Yay!
Yes.
Excellent.
All right, that brings up the consent agenda. The consent agenda, it's got minutes surplus and uncollected checks for $44 that we need to approve. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Usleton, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lawson's got a second. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the consent agenda as presented, please respond by raising your right hand. Thank you. Building and grounds. Mr. Hill, Ms. Lawson and I met last Friday and went over several different items. The flooring in the administration building and the furniture should be here next week, and hopefully that will allow us to have the study session back at... Oh, this is... Is Mr. Quick here?
Yes, he is.
It's been a great venue, and we appreciate your hospitality, but we are looking forward to going back to our home.
Thank you, Mr. Quick.
Yes. All right. There was a drainage, some extra work done on the football field in the area of the radius of the high jump pitch, which is the radius on the track closest to the school. And I won't go into great detail, but the committee felt like that we could save some money by doing a lot of this work in-house and going with a local contractor in Fayetteville, and it has worked. The contractor also had turfed the field originally when we first fixed it up, and he went to great pains when he put the new trenches in, not to mess the field up very much, and if you go by there today, you can see he's replaced it with Bermuda turf, and you can't tell that any work's been done. There's a little bit more work to be done inside the radius that I believe Mr. Ray's going to have him looking at, and that we're going to... We should work out the problem of water standing on the first two lanes in a big rain. And kudos to two members and to Mr. Ray and his maintenance team, because we have saved a lot of money there and got the job done. The painting that Mr. Quick and Mr. English has worked a plan with Lee Cole, who was a contractor over at East, has been... The first part of that's been done, and they are to soon get what the people involved to continue on work at sprucing up the high school. The band room going from the old coral room to the band room, we're going to talk about that in just a second, because that's going to take some action. The flooring for the field house that we approved recently should be done during the fall break. And the visiting soccer dugout is functional now. Roof will be completed soon, but if rain came, the visiting team would still be dry. Are there any questions or comments on the maintenance report, please?
What was the first one you spoke of prior to the high jump area?
The football field drainage.
I think there was something else.
And that has... Most of that has been accomplished already, and in the most recent rain, the result was completely different.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that brings us then to the band access to the old coral room. Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Chairman. At the June meeting, you all asked me to put out an invitation to bid for a double-door access into the old round coral room out back, which would give instrument and personnel access between the current band practice room and that area that has been mostly storaged the last several years. We received no responses to our invitation to bid. At that time, we asked Lee Cole to gauge his interest in the project. He has come back and given us a bid, and we are, as Building and Grounds, are recommending allowing Lee Cole Construction to do that project for a price of $11,000.
Which is several thousand dollars cheaper than the estimate that was in the budget that we have approved for this coming year.
That's correct.
More savings. Are there any questions for Mr. Ray on the awarding of the contract? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the $11,000 awarded to Lee Cole for the access between the coral room and the band room.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Usleton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Band trip change of date, not the band trip change.
Administration recommends board approval to change the date of the Tullahoma Marching Band Trip date from 2021 to the 2022 school year. This change of date moves the trip so the band can perform in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Dublin, Ireland in March of 2022. This 2022 trip coincides with the TCS spring break.
This was... We went over this during the study session. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to change the dates from '21 to '22.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Usleton. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the change, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Policy change recommendations, Dr. Stevens and Ms. Johnson?
Yes, the Policy Committee recommends the adoption of policies discussed in the August study session and presented in an attachment. Mrs. Johnson will review the recommended motions.
Okay. Yes, we do have them in the packet for you. So the recommended motion is to adopt the addition of or the changes to the following policies. So if you'll bear with me, because I have to read them all, so as to report to TSBA.
Take your time, it's fine.
6.301, 6.409, 4.205, 5.302, 1.202, 1.400, and 1.502. We are also deleting two policies, and this is on the first and final reading. We will delete Policies 1.503 and 4.203. Thank you.
And thank you again for the work of Policy Committee. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation from the committee?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Usleton, is there a second?
I guess I'll second this.
Second by Ms. Johnson?
The committee members are making it supposedly.
Any further discussion? If not, if you're for accepting those changes, please respond by raising your hand. Are any opposed? All right, the review recommendations.
Yes, the following policies have been reviewed by the Policy Committee with no adjustments needed. We recommend approving an update to the issue date to reflect the following policies as having been reviewed in committee with no adjustments needed. Mrs. Johnson will go over the recommended motion of this review of policies.
And once again, I'm going to read all these numbers.
We're with you.
We have to do it, and here we go. To accept an update to the issue date on the following policies on first and final reading. 1.100, 1.103, 1.104, 1.105, 1.106, 1.107, 1.201, 1.203, 1.204, 1.205, 1.301, 1.302, 1.303, 1.402, 1.403, 1.404, 1.405, 1.406. And in the 1.5s, we have 1.500, 1.501, 1.600, 1.601, 1.602, 1.603. There's a lot of policies we had to review. 1.700, 1.701, 1.703, 1.704. And finally, coming around to band, we have 1.800, 1.8012, 1.802, 1.803, 1.804, 1.807, and 1.808. Thank y'all.
Thank you again to the Policy Committee, and I can assure you those are all read and spelled and grammar corrected. Is there a motion to accept those recommendations?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawson. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the recommendation, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed?
Section 1.
Ms. Vaughn, this... We've worked together for almost eight years, I believe, and this may be the first time I get to correct you, though I admit that I may be wrong, but I think this budget amendment is for the 1920 amendment, which that says it in the narrative. Is that not right, Mr. Ray?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Ray?
Thank you. You have in your packet an amended 1920 general purpose budget. This updates the appropriations based on actual revenue and expenditures. This is a normal anticipated housekeeping item process that we should do at the end of each budget cycle. As you recall, this recommendation was made by our auditor, Householder Hartman, from the 1819 annual audit. You have in...
And the Finance Committee said that we would do so, so here we are.
Correct. That's correct, sir. You have the original unamended budget and then another column for the amended budget.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ray? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget amendments for 1920.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Usleton. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the recommendation, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. New business. Clyde Smith Leadership Award, and we've talked several study sessions about this, and I believe it was an idea that Imlu Huddleston, who was Ms. Usleton's first grade teacher, would make a fine candidate. Do you have any comments for us?
She was just wonderful. Hugged you every day. Was just... I just have wonderful memories of starting school with such a sweet, caring, wonderful teacher. I didn't go to kindergarten, no kindergarten back then. So I was first grade, and my mother didn't teach me any letters or anything before I went. So the first day of school was an A with an apple and a worm. I can still picture it and how the ditto smelled. I never had a ditto before. So wonderful memories. She was wonderful.
She passed away several years ago, and her husband passed away a few months ago, and I really regret that we weren't able to do it earlier, because this would have meant so much to him. He didn't have any children of their own, but I promise you, the children that she taught, she felt like they were hers. I would encourage someone to make a motion for hers name to be presented as a Clyde Smith Junior Leadership Award for this year.
I'd like to make a motion that Imlu Huddleston be our Clyde Smith Junior Leadership Award recipient for this year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawson. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the name of Imlu Huddleston to be the Leadership Award, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Ray, health insurance premium cap.
Thank you. Annually, staff reviews and makes recommendations to the board related to the health insurance premium cap. The cap is the maximum amount that Tullahoma City Schools contributes to the employee health insurance premiums. TCS has received notification that the health insurance premiums will increase from the state at a rate of 2% beginning in January of 2021. You may remember there was no increase at the January 2020 date, and so therefore the cap remained unchanged at that time. With this announced increase, staff is recommending the following changes to the cap for the 2021 calendar year. And I'm going to get to read some numbers to you as well. We recommend to increase the cap on employee-only health insurance from $537 to $547.74 a month. Employee and children from $711 to $725.22 monthly. Employee and spouse from $816 to $832.32 monthly. And family coverage from $1,089 to $1,110.78. I'll answer any questions you may have.
This follows a year that we didn't have an increase, is that not correct?
That's correct, sir.
And is this... This amount is covered by the 2122 budget, correct?
The 2021.
Excuse me, 21. I'm trying to get out of 2020.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from Mr. Ray.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Usleton. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the recommended changes in the cap, health insurance, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Split grade classes. Dr. Stevens.
Yes, State Board rule requires local boards of education to approve the establishment of any split-grade classes for any purpose. We recommend approval of the five elementary split-grade classes established in distance learning. Bel Air Elementary has one. Farah also has one split-grade class, and Robert E. Lee Elementary has three split-grade classes.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from Dr. Stevens for split classes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? If not, if you prefer the recommendation, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Testing moratorium, Dr. Stevens.
Knowing that the 2021 school year will be filled with challenges due to COVID-19, we respectfully request support and approval on a resolution for a moratorium on state standardized testing and accountability associated with such testing for the 2021 school year. This resolution was presented, read, and discussed at the August study session.
You know, I was right in the budget year was wrong, but I'm now have to admit that I'm not positive. Is this going to the TSBA or is this going to the General Assembly?
It will go to TSBA, correct, Ms. Vaughn?
All right, thank you. Any further questions? I would like, if the motion passes, for the administration to write a letter to both our state rep and our state senator with a copy of the resolution that we're sending to the TSBA.
I will be glad to do so, absolutely.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to support the testing moratorium resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Usleton, is there a second? You got a second there. Any further questions or comments? If not, if you prefer the...
Sure Jessica would have wanted to make that motion.
Yes, yes.
We could think of her.
Right, right. If not, let's vote. If you prefer the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Stevens' report.
Yes, we started the hybrid phase yesterday, and in the big picture of things, this has largely been a smooth transition. Teachers, staff, and administrators shared positive feedback related to the three days of preparation last week that enabled this transition to go so well. I have visited all seven schools, both yesterday and today, totaling about 10 hours of time, about five hours each day. I stepped in and out of classrooms, observed Zoom and Google Meet sessions, saw small and large groups engaging in teaching and learning together. I observed a student in a high school AP course guiding other students in the class through the online resources as the teacher listened and provided questions and feedback to the students. I observed teachers sharing their screens and using the document camera to show examples or model problems, as well as their whiteboards and even their computer screens where they were using online resources to teach an academic standard. In one elementary campus, all 53 4th graders joined this morning's morning meeting virtually, which is a time focused on the social-emotional well-being of students. I heard about the focus on social-emotional learning at another campus as well today. It is exciting to hear about students helping other students, just like they would in the physical classroom. You can actually hear them talking to one another as they navigate parts of technology and the teaching and learning environment itself. I heard laughter between teachers and students when they solved a problem together. Small breakout groups, where more personalized learning is happening in classrooms. A quote from one principal today, "I'm so surprised at how well it has gone. Only one teacher was not able to get on this morning, and within five minutes, the teacher and entire class were online together. It was an easy fix." Teachers have stepped up in a big way. This statement has been a resounding statement across the district. They are utilizing online resources in a manner they've not previously and working to create an effective online learning environment for their students, where their needs, academic, social, and emotional, are met. One principal shared that parents appreciate the distance learning that's happening, the schedules are clear, and the lessons happening are engaging. I've heard about parent meetings happening at a couple of our campuses. These parents attended sessions to learn about the technology being used and how they might support their learner. They actually were side-by-side with their child with the device as they were learning together. Some parents have actually come to the school to get targeted support when needed. Now, with all those positives, you can imagine there have certainly been some challenges. Technological glitches certainly have arisen throughout the day here and there. We discovered that the rescheduling of students caused a delay in some of the students being rostered properly to our programs. These issues have been easy to resolve once known. Teachers are learning the different settings and various meeting platforms, whether it's Zoom or Google Meet, and they're learning how to navigate these and make corrections quickly. I have to give a special shout-out here to Dr. Sudbury and the technology team. They have provided a Zoom tech support hotline. It is open all day, 8 to 3. Teachers can log on and get quick help in the moment. We are working on solutions for those who do not have connectivity. Right now, we have two households where the hotspots we provided are not working effectively, and we are now focusing on another solution for these students. So that's an update on two days of the hybrid plan at work. As you can imagine, I will be monitoring it each day as we evaluate the progress, the positives, and the challenges that arise.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevens. Any comments or questions for her?
I do have a few comments. I want to thank the teachers. My children, like many of yours, are learning remotely, and they are so patient when it comes to the attendance-taking. Of course, so we have three students, Johnny Sue and Mary. Unfortunately, Mary waits about five minutes later to say, "I'm here." And so I was overhearing the teacher, I can't think of her name, it's been a long day, and she said, "It's okay. We'll get through this." And with everything that's going on, we know we wish we could be back at school, social interacting and learning together is one. But I just thought, and when she said it, you just see, because I was peeking around the corner in the kitchen as Claire was on Learn Remotely, and the students kind of smiled because they were nervous. And so I appreciate the teachers' patience, and I ask for the patience of the parents and for us as board members, because this is challenging.
So it's a tough time?
It's a tough time, but we... Teachers, we appreciate it.
It's new territory, and I have been overwhelmed with the positives that I have been able to take in at every school both days. I have to say that, and thank you for that feedback. I appreciate that, and I know teachers will appreciate hearing those words.
Any further comments? I've got something I want to read that will be entered into the minutes, but first...
And I'm sorry to interject, there was one thing I forgot. I'm very excited to announce our new Technology Director, Dr. Susan Sudbury, and our new Special Ed Director, Dr. Wendy Wilkerson.
Would they both stand?
And Dr. Sudbury, will you stand? And I'm not certain, but there she is, Dr. Wilkerson in the back. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
But I'd like to get a motion to adjourn, and will adjourn immediately following my comments. Ms. Johnson?
But are we... Who's got the board liaison report?
I'm sorry, that's supposed to be me. She emailed us earlier and said that she was not going to be able to attend. The main focus would be that the city's applied for a grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield that hopefully would be able to add a playground and some other equipment in the Silver Street Park area. Would there be a motion to adjourn when we finish?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lawson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Usleton. All right. Ms. Vaughn, if you would please liberally sprinkle these comments over the minutes and make sure that the comments that they refer to, if they were... A hard copy will be provided to that person when you're finished. The Chair wishes to recognize and thank Mrs. Gigi Robinson for diligent work during her years in office. Her hours of work in conscientious preparation for board meetings, TSBA functions, and board committee meetings did not go unnoticed. With stronger conviction, I want to acknowledge the support, devotion, and love she's exhibited for every student, teacher, and staff member of our school system. This love is only surpassed by the love she has for her family and, more importantly, for her Lord. Thank you. And I have a certificate for you, and you're going to go with the blue line here. And I wish the other board members and Dr. Stevens would come into the table. Come on.
My dad, he was a professional photographer, always decided he could see the camera, so he went and took a look. I want to say just a word. I prayed that I would not be emotional tonight.
I wish you prayed for me.
It has nothing to do with anything that happened, but I just would like to say to this board how much I respect you and appreciate you. Four years ago, I walked in here, I didn't know a thing about this. Pat and Kim kept saying, "You can do this, you know, you can do this." I had talked with them before. I decided to run, and they kept saying, "You can do this." But I have to say, first of all, to Sandy Vaughn, none of us would be able to do what we do without her. She's our board secretary, and she still answers my phone calls. I have crazy questions, and she knows they're going to be crazy, she still answers my phone calls, and I just so appreciate you and everything you do. But what I'd like to say to everybody is, I think until you do this, you don't really know what it's like. It's rewarding, it's wonderful, wonderfully rewarding. It's heavy, it's a lot of responsibility, and I appreciate that people believed that I could do this and that we all together could do this, and I have so much respect for you. This is a board full of integrity. You cannot harm the people to serve on your board, and I hope you realize that. I want y'all to know that you have my support, but more than that, you have my prayers, and I'll be right behind you all the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we adjourn.